Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 21st City Council meeting. And also, the first day of summer. And it feels like it today. Rather warm. So. I'm trying to get my camera set up so that I'm in the picture here. Okay. So we call the meeting to order. So it's. I'm going to call on JB, please, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, JB. A roll call, please. And Rebecca, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Wadsworth here. Councilman Sandretto.
Here.
Councilman Mokler.
Here.
Councilman Reed.
Here.
Councilwoman Funk.
Present.
All present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, which consists of the regular council meetings from minutes from June 7th, Bills and Communications.
I move we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Mokler, aye. Sandretto, aye.
Funk, aye.
Wadsworth, aye.
Reed, aye.
Okay, motion carries. Are there any proformations and announcements? Hearing none, we'll move to visitor comments. Yes.
One moment, we have understood to amend the agenda.
Yes, I was just going to do that. Okay, the. I believe we have some changes to the agenda.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilperson Funk, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to request an executive session to talk about potential litigation. And I believe that Jeff has the number for that.
I do. That'd be 4230-110-1I.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to request a second executive session for an employee-related matter.
So that would be evaluation of the employee performance under RCW 4230-110-1G.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Are we wanting to add these at the end, so that way people don't?
Yes, I think where we have under item L, we'll have two executive sessions.
Oh, L1 and L2.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I understand Millie Ann wanted to add something, an announcement, under Regular Reports. Item number three.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to accept the approved amended agenda. Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mokler, aye.
Funk, aye.
Reed, aye.
Okay. Thank you, I understand that's everyone unanimous.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, moving on now to visitor comments, I understand Manny Ponce requested to talk about Disc Golf and the future course in Benton City. Mr. Ponce.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, I'm Manny. Pleasant to be here, everybody. Alrighty, so I just wanted to.
Can you state your name and your address?
Sure, my name is Manny Ponce, address is 1405 Dale Avenue, Benton City, Washington. I'm actually just here to, more than anything, want to say thank you guys for your time. And wanted to see if I can present the opportunity for Disc Golf, which is a friendly outdoor sport, it's welcoming to everybody and all types of fun that comes with it and we have, we've been in dialogue with the BCRO and then some also, some local Disc Golfers, they are willing to help and partake in creating this course, it is a non-expensive thing to do, the BCRO has allocated some funds to be able to make this come into place, we have been in dialogue in creating a course and it's just a small layout and I can present it if you guys wish to view. The location where we wish to present this is at the 14th Street Walking Trail or Orbital Marker area. It's Fish and Wildlife property and it's an area where kids normally go and why not make it an area where they can actually do something fun and educating towards them, because for those who have played golf, golf is also a sport that helps you and challenges you to think outside of the box and be able to maneuver and create certain things, so. The presentation would be if we can create something at the, at the walking trail, it would be nine-hole course to start off and possibly move to 18 holes. We are trying to see if we can move it towards the end of the year, so as soon as possible, try to get this into place, it doesn't require too much of the city, it just requires more of BCRO coming in and maybe helping out with clearing out some fairways to allow the disc to flow through. But for the most part, it's all it is, is just baskets and teapads. So, just wanted to present that and I do have a small layout, I don't know if you guys have time to view or not.
You can leave it with us, we'll get it in our next.
Okay. Sounds good, I'll leave this here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on now to Regular Reports, the first report will be the Benton County Sheriff's Report. And is someone here to?
Yep. Commander Clark is here.
Okay, hello.
Hello, Mayor, so thanks for letting us join again. I don't have a whole lot to present today, everything has been going well there in Benton City. I know we talked about the joint purchase we did with the Fire District 2 and the boat. Since that boat has become operational, we've been able to use it several different occasions. So that is a great tool for the community, not only for law enforcement, but for Fire Department and the community. The second thing I wanted to touch on, I know it just happened, but we just recently did the Benton City Kids Day there at the school. And I wanted to make sure I told the school district, thank you, they were gracious enough to allow us to use the school playground. We had the Fire Department, Fire District 2 out there, Benton County Sheriff's Office out there, and we had a great turnout. So I was very impressed with the community coming out, gave the, the parents and kids an opportunity to come out, they saw K-9 demonstrations, they saw the boat that we purchased together with the Fire District 2, and overall, it was a success. And we're looking forward to doing it again next year. So with that, we are planning on being out in Benton City for every event that we can, I know you guys have an ice cream social there in the community on July 3rd. Got a flyer on that, so we're going to continue to be out there and get to know everybody and make sure the deputies are doing their extra patrols and taking care of business there.
Great, thank you very much. Does anyone on the council have any questions about the report?
Oh, ma'am.
No? Okay, well, thank you very much and thank you for coming out and meeting us, yes? Did someone say something?
Oh, I said, thank you, Commander.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commander. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next is the staff report, and I believe all of that's in your packets. Any committee meeting reports?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I attended the Good Roads meeting last Wednesday and had a insightful presentation on WS DOT Washington and their allocation of funds for roads this year. And according to Mr. Trepaner from DOT, they got a whole bunch of preservation funding available and they're going to be doing a lot of projects fairly quickly. I didn't get a chance to talk to him, I did pass it on to Alan because he sees him. But with the bridge and the potholes on that, I figured that'd be a good project on the throw some money out.
That'd be great. Have to figure out how we get on the top of his list, huh?
Well, that's the facts, there's a lot of bridges with a lot of holes, I guess.
Yeah.
You're working on them as priority, so. But that's the report from that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
And this is Sarah, I have a couple of quick reports, I always had the fortunate opportunity to attend the irrigation meeting last week. The Cuyahoga Irrigation District meeting last week. It's a busy time of year for them, there was no really significant updates, they were just working on making sure that things were pumped out when the water was so high, so it didn't cause more problems, it was informative. It's really happy for the opportunity to participate. I would also comment that Kelsey Seacord, who presented to City Council at the last meeting to give us an update on the equipment for the walking trail, she attended the Cuyahoga Irrigation District meeting also and presented the idea to them while the organization was supportive, they wanted to run it past their own external council first and hope to come back to it in about a month. In addition to the irrigation meeting, I'd give one more quick update on Benton City Revitalization Organization, we have been working with Fish and Wildlife in the city for a while to get the kiosk at the boat launch replaced right by where you would drive your boat in and also to kiosks with historical information put along the walking trail for a while and it's taken a really long time to move things forward because of the weather and we had to get the cultural survey done last year when we were looking at the electric stuff and everything else, so it's all cleared to move the concrete pads forward and build these informational kiosks to, for example, historical information of irrigation on 14th Street by the old paddle wheel, but we're going through the process to help support Fish and Wildlife, who's pretty busy on some quotes for cement, but those are definitely moving along, and then we also got approval just today from the garbage people. Basin Disposal, who's been very kind to support a fall cleanup. The dates are October 14th and October 22nd, and I just wanted to say that out loud, we do carry insurance, we don't have a contract currently of the city, but we'll be doing trash cleanup and stuff like that, so if there's something the organization should work to put in place, again, those are October dates for a fall cleanup, kind of as everything wraps up. Then the last update I had was from Benton Franklin Council of Governments, so working with the city grant writer, the city and a number of organizations like Friends of Badger Mountain and other organizations around the region, wanted to let you know we had some breaking news. The breaking news is that Benton City is on the list for Representative New Houses Federal Appropriation for $2.5 million to move forward with the bridge project and other restoration around that area for the walking, the connection. So there's, we just found out very, very late last week and had a call this morning to get more information, there's a presentation that will work to circulate through Rebecca, so you can have some more insight. You know, Alan and a number of people have been working on this for a while, and it's the first time Benton City's got on the list for an appropriation, the process is long, we can also provide a brief summary on what that looks like, but we're very optimistic that come, you know, this time next year, there'll be money either in the bank or will have a good indication at the very end of this year on next steps, it was not, it didn't have significant matching requirements, and although we did not make it on Senator Murray and Ray Catwell's list, you only need to make it on one, so it's a really good news story and they've really, they work hard and talk behind the scenes, so I think, you know, really good job to the city and some of our partners, the next step for things we need to do from a practical perspective, and we had three really strong letters of support from Visit Try Cities, Friends of Badger Mountain. There was a lot of letters of support, so we need to kind of give them a little update and just say, thank you, we got some good information, and then we'll distribute the packet with like a couple maps in it back to New Houses office along with Maria and Patty Murray and Maria Catwell's office, just so their staffers can have it. It's a little bit more information than the very short application that the grant writer was able to put together, so I think that that's, those are some really big ones, those are the updates I had, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, Millie Ann.
Yes, I wanted to take the opportunity to remind you that the Planning Commission is holding workshops on Thursday, this Thursday, July 23rd. June 23rd, thank you, sorry. On the proposed potential design regulations and on potential changes to R3 zoning language, so the regular Planning Commission meeting will start at 6, but there will be public hearings that you should not be there for, so we're asking City Council to show up at 7. Please, if you could be there, that would be great, because then we can get sort of a jumpstart on looking at some of these proposed changes, you can go ahead and read through them after that meeting or at that meeting and start asking the questions, so we can get it moving forward as quickly as possible.
Will this be Zoom on Zoom 2 or just in person?
Via both.
Okay.
And I have posted a possible quorum notice already, just in case you guys decide to show up.
If you show up as a quorum, it has to, everybody has to know about it.
So I posted it as of Friday.
Taking care of that.
There will be a possible quorum at the workshop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I just want to give an update to everybody as well. We had, you guys have been inquiring as to when we're going to get the second part of ARPA. The mayor received an email which she has forwarded to me. According to OFM, we'll be receiving our second deposit hopefully by the last week of June. Sometime next week.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on then to discussion items. The first discussion item we have on the agenda is speeding on Willow Way and Kendall Road. I did discuss this with Jose and he, he wasn't here today, but he was going to get the equipment out and be sure everyone knew how to work it and then start putting the traffic counters out on Willow Way and Kendall. Other than that, I don't have any more to discuss.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Did you get ahold of the Sheriff's Department regarding possibly putting a speeding one out there?
No, I did not reach him, I have several things that are on my list to contact him about and I didn't have those yet, so I was kind of waiting and hoped I would get some of those other items, but I didn't.
Madam Mayor, can I speak to that as well?
Oh, sure, yeah.
So. Yeah, no, I was sitting in listening, so I heard the, there's speeding complaints there on Willow Way and Kendall. Is that correct? So what I can, what I can do is I can get our radar trailer moved out to that area. I will, I will also speak with the deputies, the supervisors out on the road and see if we can get extra patrols in those two areas. On those complaints, is there a certain time that they're saying, or is it throughout the day?
I don't know, let me ask, is there anyone in the audience that brought that up? Or anyone listening that could speak?
Yeah, I'm Lori Lynn and my address is 1704 Kendall Road. And I brought a couple of statements and I've talked to quite a few people. And they're very concerned as Willow Way has maybe three houses that aren't sold at this point, pretty much everybody's moving in, they have, a lot of them have young kids, everybody has animals, I've never seen so many animals in the neighborhood. Kendall still is filling up, but this, as one of the people stated in a letter that is once they turn around from Willow and they get onto Kendall, it's like it's a raceway after that, they just zoom down there. And I've talked to the sergeant twice about this and he said he was going to put up one of those speeding things, I'm not sure what it's going to do, they already know they're speeding. It never happened, but I'm not sure what that's going to solve, we need something that's going to slow them down. People are concerned for their kids, for the life of their kids, because when they come around that, that corner onto Willow Way, they're just like trucking it and, and again, after that accident, now three weekends ago, that's, you know, that's a big concern for people.
Yeah, and, and we will get the radar trailer there, that's one thing I'll take care of tomorrow morning to try to get that out, I don't know if it'll be in the next day or two, but we will. I understand the concerns with getting the radar trailer out there, the most effective tool is to actually have our law enforcement deputies in the area. So I will put that information out there, I wrote your address down as well, so I have that. I haven't been out there, so I'm not sure if they can park on the side of the road there or if they can park in your driveway, but we will definitely get our deputies out there to run some emphasis on the traffic.
Molly Reed, who lives at the end, actually, in one of her statements, she said she extended her driveway and she's right on the corner and she said she'd welcome if somebody's sitting in her driveway and trying to catch these people, because they're just going, it's, it's not reasonable.
Okay, yes, and, and like I said, I understand, I will put that out to my traffic units tomorrow morning. If you have any other concerns, definitely feel free to reach out to me at the Sheriff's Office, I'm Commander Matt Clark. You can call the office, just ask to speak with me or shoot and send me an email and we'll get some extra patrols out there for you.
Yeah, I, they have, I think they've tried to improve the number of control, it's all day long, I, I'm out at 5 o'clock in the morning sometimes, sometimes I'm out at 10 or 11 at night walking the dogs and it doesn't make any difference, it's my understanding it's a cut through for people or a shortcut to go to Prosser and, and so they do that and they just, they just take off, you know.
Okay, well, we'll see if we can make a little bit of a difference and be visible in that area.
We'd appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Okay. Now we'll move on then to discussion of the amending the moratorium Resolution 202206.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so this moratorium was passed per Resolution 202206 on May 17, 2022. At the last City Council meeting, a citizen requested that council bring it back for this as a discussion item to see if they will possibly amend the moratorium by possibly excluding short plats from the moratorium and or provide an exemption for their application due to the circumstances presented at the meeting. So it, it's up to council if they want to amend, resend, or extend the moratorium. I don't know if you guys remember what the, the visitor's comments last, at the last meeting from Mr. McAllister. He had been talking with city staff and the HBL since the fall of the previous year regarding his property being short-platted. And unfortunately, he submitted his application a week after the moratorium passed. So, and when he came in, I told him I couldn't take it due to the fact that it was a short plat and it's clearly states short plats are not to be are part of the moratorium, so he requested we bring it back for you guys to discuss if you guys want to amend it, exclude it, or make an exception, however, one of the things I mentioned to Mr. McAllister is that if council decides to make an exception for him, it's going to open the door to make exceptions for other people. And so that's up to you guys, which you guys want to deal with this. Or if you guys just want to leave it the way it is.
And, and he is present today, right?
Yes, he is.
Did he want to come up and add something?
Sure.
So. I, we've owned a number of homes over the years, but I've never short-platted a property. And it's not a real clear path. What you have to do. The city gave me a list of the things that had to be done and it's, it's partial, but it's, it's a nice start. So we had to see first if we had the utilities. What the market was, what we could sell them for. How the mortgage company felt about it. And so we held the again, hold on, what was the name of the meeting that you were in it to? The application.
The pre-application.
The pre-application to see if, the purpose of that is to see if.
Can you please speak into the microphone, sir?
I'm sorry, the purpose of that is to see if the utilities are accessible and the property zone properly for the request, is that correct?
And if you have any questions.
If I had any, yeah, okay. And I think we went through that and everybody agreed it was what we needed to do was a survey to define that and so we invested in a survey, they're rather expensive. I was surprised, but that's what it is, and the process to get a surveyor is a long process right now, because they, I don't know about now, but when we applied of the, I contacted three of the major, well, reputable firms and two of them weren't even taking, they had long lead times and they weren't even taking, you can't, couldn't even take a number, you know, they weren't promising anything. And Worley did finally was able to come out and survey it. We could squeeze on the, I have maps here of the plat, if anybody wants to look at them, I passed them out before. Worley said we could put 37500-ish square foot lots in there and we don't particularly care to have the small lot. So we we felt it would kind of degrade that area. And so we chose to go with two nearly quarter acre lots. And then we got with, had to get with Benton Irrigation District to see where the entry point would be for irrigation for those properties and all of the Eastmans and ran things by Alan and where the sewer would go, so it was quite a process. And everybody's been very pleasant to, to deal with. But anyway, I, by the time I've gone down this path, I missed the deadline for the permit and so I, I, I understand that kind of one of the big agendas is, and you guys can clear it up if it isn't, but one of the big agendas you guys are looking at right now are mobile homes, park in the region that's kind of been proposed and trying to put some guidelines in, in which is compatible with our city in the future, and I, I really welcome that. I think that's a wonderful idea. The I have a covenant on the property for no mobile homes. And I also have a covenant with no two-story homes, because we have a horizon view, I guess you would call it. And we got an offer for both of the lots, which is well above the average. It's almost double. It's actually a little more than double, according to Dick Helen, the local realtor. My concern is, I talked to the builder who they, that gave us the offer. They happened to rebuild the, I don't know if you guys recall that, house is kind of close to, I, I don't have the address with me. It's had empty for about three years. It's, I think it's black with white trim. And it's on thirteenth, just before Grace Avenue on the east side. They bought that and finished it and had a number of offers for, they sold it over five hundred thousand. They do nice work and they're, I like them. I, I don't wanna had another guy come by and offer and I told him I wasn't interested. So we want good neighbors. And so I, I don't know if you guys can, you know, approach this for some of the concerns you guys brought up about, you brought up that, you know, this may open the door for others. Can the council look at, you know, the different areas of our community? You know, we have industrial, we have business, we have R two, we have multifamily, we have mobile home. Those are all different kind of, they, they bring with them their own challenges and I, I kinda got the feeling that the R two is not really the issue. It's that, that kind of brought this moratorium up. Possibly, but anyway, we have money invested and I think this opportunity's gonna leave us if we can't do that because interest rates are rising. And it would affect us. It, it, it was a long-term plan of ours to sell those and pay a mortgage off. And my wife's five years away from retirement. I'm retired and we wanna stay in our home. We like our home. We've put quite a bit of money in it so far. And so I was wondering if the council could consider other options. I know with each time you make a change, it brings up other challenges. And you guys are probably much more well-versed than me. I I guess I throw it out there for you to maybe some comments or thoughts from the council. I haven't seen a goal either for the council, really of what this moratorium is really about. I mean, I got a little peek, but I haven't really seen anything that we're, this is what we're trying to accomplish. And that kind of concerns me because this could go on for a long time. And I've, I've sat on committees before. I was on the Lane Community College Citizens Advisory Board and St. Vincent Paul Advisory Board. And I managed a heavy equipment dealership. And so I've been around structured meetings. But, and I know we can, they can, they can drag. So I, I don't know if you guys can dice up the pie and, and tackle different areas of the city and really put thought into them. You know, multi-housing and whatever we're gonna do here that might give us the opportunity. That's my question.
I think unfortunately, in, in order, as ABHL and the mayor discussed with us, in order to facilitate doing these R two, R three design specifications, we have to have a moratorium on all those districts and all the functions of that.
Otherwise you look like.
Yes. So a, at this point, the goal, as you heard, Ms. Millian, is to facilitate moving this process as fast as possible. It has been our, our goal. From my standpoint, I, I sympathize where your position is. I do. Unfortunately, I, I think looking at the, the greater good of Benton City as a whole, I think we're on the right path. And there may be disagreement with that. Nobody ever likes everybody's decisions, right? So that, that would be my statement on it. But I'm, I'm willing to hear other councils' feedbacks, so.
Mr. Mokler, do you have a thought?
I was the sole vote of no for the moratorium and I'd be happy to do it right now.
I, I think the timing is poor, not by anybody's. The problems don't pop, pop up at our most convenient times. So I wanna give a, you know, not pointed, I, I don't mean it as if you guys chose to pick this particular time. I think the challenges present themselves. Oftentimes in our opportune times, but it, it, I, in my research, I, I found it, it is a little unusual to do a moratorium like this. Over zoning to just stop business. Usually they're done normally for the safety of the community, like you have a sewer line that can't take anymore building in an area. When you put a moratorium in that area, or it might create some public health or water, but to shut the whole city down when we're moving into a poor real estate market, which could greatly affect us. I mean, if we wait, waited six months to do it, you know, if time would have allowed, when it came up at that time, there probably would be nobody wanting to buy or build. Or quite possibly, who knows where this is gonna go, but do you have any thoughts?
I really empathize with your situation and at the same time, I really support what council member Sandretto commented on. I think, you know, the work is well underway to work on moving things forward with task at hand through Planning Commission with the city. And I'm supportive of staying the course that we're under based on the investment that's been made.
What are you hoping to be able to open up R two? We're R two, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when do you guys hope to be, be able to release? Can you release partial parts of the, do you have to release them all at once?
It's not so much a release. It's, it's, uh, it's the update of the design standards and the design standards affect R two and R three. So it's updating the design standards, if I'm correct, and it affects both of them. So we can't, if we're not gonna make an ordinance to amend R two and then go back and amend R three when it's all the same ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah. My understanding correct, Millian? Yeah.
Okay. When are you guys hoping to, you said you're trying to move it through. When are you?
What's a?
Maybe by early fall.
Millian, excuse me, could you speak into the mic?
She said, but maybe by early fall.
The moratorium was passed on May seventeenth for a six-month period of time. That's maybe the, that's not what it has to be done, but I think that's the best information that we were provided with to make a decision as council.
Now, keep in mind that if these design standards do get done prior to the end of six months, then the moratorium on council's approval can be rescinded and removed. But there's no, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Millian, there's no statute or law that says it has to be done by this amount of time, because it's a legislative.
The, the new code is like, that's correct. There's no time requirement.
But we will be having the first workshop on it this Thursday at the Planning Commission.
But, yeah, okay. All right. The sooner the better. I don't know how long the builder would be interested in, in a diminishing market to hold out. At this point in time, he told me they would be ready to probably move ahead with everything in about a month and a half. They have houses in process and as soon as they get to a certain point, they wanted to move ahead on ours. And of course, my concern is the having our assets tied up and, and the financial possibility of fair financial loss for homeowner. So, did you have any, Jessica, did you have any thoughts?
I'm kinda, I'm, I'm with the other council members on that. I mean, we, we made a decision and if we open it up for you, it kinda opens up the
Yeah.
And I, I definitely sympathize with you.
Sure. Yeah, I, you know, the process drug on, but I never would have thought a moratorium would have come along and I mean, that was kind of bizarre. I, I mean, just something that would never have been on my watch list.
Mr. McAllister, thank you, thank you for your time and coming back. Okay, so we will need to move on now. We have a public hearing.
Sounds good. So anyway, thank you for the consideration and if it moves ahead quicker, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is a public hearing on ordinance, hearing and ordinance, the first reading title seventeen amendments. As recommended by the Planning Commission and Millian, you are going to start this.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, can you open the public hearing?
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Now opening the public hearing for public comment on title seventeen.
I'd like to first give a quick recap of title seventeen. This one has unfortunately not gone through very quickly. It has been to Planning Commission for a few workshops and then Planning Commission held a public hearing, took public comments and recommended approval to city council. And then it came to city council for an introduction and I believe a workshop and then a public hearing over a month ago. And now we're back for another public hearing on this legislative item. The purpose of updating title seventeen is to update the language so it's current with state standards per fifty-eight seventeen RCW. Another reason to do it is to include regulations on all the ways to subdivide and adjust property lines to make sure there's proper language. And another third reason is to make, to make the whole code more user-friendly for property owners and for, for us, for administrators and reviewers, not just us, but other people who review these projects. A highlight, very high, high-level highlight of the proposed changes. One, there are proposed sections to be added. So there's a whole new boundary line adjustment section that was not, that was non-existent before. There was no direction on how a person would apply or how a boundary line adjustment would be reviewed. And there was an additional section added for sidewalks to clarify when they're required for subdivisions. Another effort was made to just go through and scrub and fix typos and redundancies and grammar. The proposed changes bring the code up to date with the state regulations, reduce the liability for the city. And the proposals include updated application requirements, streamlining the review process, clarifying appeal procedures and consolidating information where appropriate. So I think at this time, city council could ask any burning questions about proposed changes to title seventeen.
Um, so I, I just got some comments. One, one is I was looking through this and looking at the specific sections as well as reading the whole thing best I can, because I'm not a land use guy, right? But one, one thing that caught my eye is in the approvals for the final and the site plan itself. There's no mention of the fire district. Shouldn't they be approving some of this stuff, return ratings and their fire trucks and things like that?
Yes, and there is a section, I'll have to remember where it is, but during the processing, there is a section that says that the plots are sent out to the different agencies for review. So it says that it goes to engineer.
Yeah, the public utility district, other utility providers, irrigation district. But I don't see any mention of the local fire protection district or even any other interested party that, and I don't think that may be, but and, and them signing off on those as well to have a signature with the approval process. And I, I just mentioned that because I know in some cases, we've had some scenarios where certain individuals were allowed to put driveways or whatever. There, there's no way to get a fire truck in there, right? So th- those are, those are concerns for public health and safety. So that, that's just a comment that I think there should be a signature block added on that particular idea.
Under administrative review, section B, it does list the applicable fire department.
Do you, can you tell me the, the number like seventeen?
Ten forty.
Thank you.
B.
It's been a while since I've looked at it.
Just says it goes to them. It doesn't.
Any applicable, the proposed boundary line adjustment will go to the applicable fire department.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm looking more at the, the site plans and the approval process. I just did not see that in there.
I think Alan does send it to the fire department, but Alan, are you on today?
He is here and we, we have been in the practice of sending it to the fire department also. And then if we don't hear from them, we have Alan Badger then.
Okay. Well, I, I was just thinking for our benefit to have it on the plans and they signed off on it. That's important. And I, I, I don't know if there'd be any other interested party either.
They're, they're the designated official under the international fire code, so they should be reviewing and approving them. The state adopted.
Well, in, in, you know, again, there was also the question, should we have other agencies, Department of Ecology or who was near Waterway? Fish and Wildlife, if it butts their properties or interacts with their properties somehow, should, should they have a, a block or just an other section? I, I don't know. I, I was just spitballing that, thinking about it when I read it. It seemed like, and I know the process, it's and I know the process, it's bureaucracy at its finest, but you know, when you're trying to approve these site plans or these subdivisions or the short plats or whatever they are. The, the question really is, has everybody seen it? And do we got record that everybody seen it?
Can we know the age, Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes.
Further to council members, Sandretto's comments, we, we know that HBL does an excellent job making sure it gets through everyone and we're very fortunate to get to work with you all, but having it, you know, in the update in the section to make sure no one else can have an excuse to miss it matters.
Is it in the SEPA section, Millian?
Well.
Ecology would come in, right?
That's where ecology would come in. If you're doing anything on lands covered by water, it triggers SEPA. Otherwise, short plots of a certain number are exempt from SEPA. But if you're covered by water, it would go through that and then ecology would re- review it, definitely. There is, so you know, if it's something that you feel strongly that needs to be added, we can go back to the drawing board and amend the language to add that.
Well, as
That's in the critical areas ordinance, correct? So that does get looked at. There is the, the only thing that I can think of right now that in the approval criteria, for instance, for short plots, you do have to make the case that it says appropriate provisions are made for the public health, safety, general welfare, fire protection and other necessary services and for such open spaces, drainageways, streets and roads, alleys and public ways. So that's what triggers us to call or email the fire department and have them review it so that we can say it meets the appropriate, it, it makes appropriate provisions for fire protection and other necessary services. So there is something in there right now. It's not an explicit si- signature block.
And, and I mean, we don't have to go back to the drawing board a hundred percent. I'm just saying that, you know, I guess add F. And that's under
Seventeen twelve oh six oh. Is that where you are?
I'm on seventeen fourteen oh three oh, but it's probably in twelve two because it's on two spots. And in those two spots, all you'd have to do is add it.
It does add, you know, this may or may not be a reason to do it. When you, so that the applicant has to go around and get the signatures. So there would have to be someone at the fire department willing and ready to accept that and to sign off on plots. We don't toss them around the applicant when they're ready to record, right before they record, they have everything in place and it gets a final review by staff. And then they take it to the irrigation district and the utility districts and then all of the other signature blocks. They take it around and get those signatures. So we'll add one more stop.
I, I, I think it's warranted, but you know, maybe I'm biased or maybe I'm overzealous in my thought process here. That it, it would only stand to reason that you'd have a fire chief or assistant fire chief signing off saying, yes, this is a good plan. So it's on record.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Is there a way you can put on the ordinance, the order that they gotta get them signed? Because normally they try to come to us first. Get it assigned. And I don't, I would prefer to be the, the city be the last one. So we see that it's been approved by everybody else and then it gives us time for to do the fee schedule with the reimbursements and invoices and stuff.
And it's hard, it's hard for the city really to sign off before everyone else is approved because that's sort of the city's role is to make sure that all the applicable entities have signed off or sort of the last.
Yeah.
The last stop.
But they tend to try to come to us first and it's like, uh, can you go get the other signatures first?
I don't, yeah, okay. So we can, we can look into adding a signature block for fire. I, I'm trying to recall if I've ever seen that anywhere else.
We used to do in Waukesha County. I remember we had a
You had fire sign off?
Right. Yeah, I remember we had a fire guy sign off. It's fire engineering, health department. Critical areas, staff if they were needed.
Madam Mayor, is public allowed to speak at this?
Um, I don't know at this, um, this is Mr. Decker.
Yeah, this is an open public meeting, is that correct?
Yes, then you may.
I would like to ask the city council, have any of you sat down and discussed this title seventeen measure with Don Allen? He just went through a dog and pony show with you, the city, everybody, the HBL. It's a dog and pony show that you guys got going on here. It's, it's absolutely disgusting and why the city council has not invited Mr. Allen to sit down and let him tell you the dog and pony show that he's had to go through with this, much, much less with a, a HBL. You, this, this is absolutely remiss by, by, by the city council and you, Mayor. This is, this is I don't want to hear, Linda, I don't want to, I don't want to hear your lies. Linda, as far as I'm concerned, you're a liar. I have no use for you.
I know.
Whether you like that or not, that's a reality.
You're out of order, Mr. Decker.
I'm not out of order. You're a liar, Linda. I've told you that. I've got proof of it before. You know that. So do I. So do you. Everybody does.
Mr. Decker, we invited Mr. Allen to speak at the last council meeting about this and asked him questions. I personally asked him what, what he, he recommended for us and he addressed it.
Madam Mayor, may I just have the floor?
Yes, you may.
And also I reviewed and re-reviewed every piece that Mr. Allen asked to. I'm short of sitting down with him personally and going over each individual piece where his concerns were. That's the only thing I haven't done. But I took every section that he had and I reread it two or three times looking for possible issues. And that's what I'm bringing forward right now, Mr. Decker. I appreciate your comments, but we need to keep things civil. I yield my time there.
Thank you.
I would say the other thing, I think the more common thing that probably Millian seen more often is that, you know, the fire department will make comments at the preliminary stage where you initially, you know, submit the application and you circulate it. And then those, those comments are sort of incorporated typically with the help of engineering to make sure that, you know, the, the required turnaround standards are met. That's another option.
And they'll often give us conditions to add.
Right.
That will, that get added as conditions of approval for the plot. And those have, those conditions have to be met before they can get their final plot.
I, I, again, I, I don't have a problem with them making comments and all that. What I'm looking at is when we finalize this and we're putting it in the archive. We, we want to have a definite thing that we can back and say, yes, they did see this and they said it's good as is, as it's finalized. That, that's my only thought process there. I mean, i- if I go to loan, get a loan at the bank, if I don't sign the loan, they don't give me the loan, right?
So you're, um, and I'm like, I'm not going to argue with that. But what I will say is that the staff report and the application, all of the packet and all of the packet information here should be part of your ar- archive. It should be what you can look back on for each short plot or preliminary plot. And in that you can see who made comments, what the comments were. And then, you know, the conditions that are, that were part of the approval process. I don't have a problem adding a title block. I don't know procedurally how we can go forward. If we can do a first reading tonight or if we need to postpone the first reading.
We can do a first reading within a minute, right?
Okay.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
I think, uh, Millian where Mr. Sandretto was coming from is just like a double check to make sure that their conditions and comments were met.
I understand.
They review it. The ones I've seen that I've signed, I don't remember if the engineer signed. Do you sign them, Alan?
Yeah, it's usually the most common thing is that fire department gives the comments and the engineer, the engineer and the fire department are going to speak the same language in terms of what the turnaround needs to look like. Incorporated.
Are there any other questions?
I had one, but I left my paper and I can't remember what it was.
I have one. You've heard me ask it before, but not to this group. So I'm just going to ask it again and thank you for indulging me. Under seventeen twelve oh one, short plot applicability and seventeen fourteen, no, seventeen sixteen, ten for long plot applicability. There was increases that took short plots need for complying from four to nine and subdivisions from five to more than nine, which is ten, right? And I think I was just wondering if you could educate us on if those numbers have to be those numbers or if those are the discretion of, of council.
They're certainly at the discretion of council. I'm looking at a PowerPoint presentation that Nicole provided to city council a few months ago in which she went into the reasoning behind it. How common it is, how common it is for short plots to be up to nine and for preliminary plots to be more than nine. Your SEPA ordinance follows that. So SEPA is triggered at lot number ten. So anything less than that does not go through SEPA. The legislative authority, that's you, can increase the number according to the RCWs. And there's a lot of affordable housing information that goes along with it. And then she provided another slide that talks about who in the area is doing what as far as how many lots.
Thank you.
And, and the other piece to that that might add is that we've already increased our flexible threshold under our SEPA code. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
So this would need to agree with that. It's really the main, one of the main differences between the short and long plot is that a long plot or subdivision, major subdivision, however you want to call it, triggers SEPA. So right now our code says that, you know, the SEPA is triggered on, on a nine lot division, which doesn't make any sense under fifty-eight seventeen because you've got that short plot, long plot distinction that needs to agree with.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
To your question, Millian, so the first reading is part of this? Or are we doing it as a
You are scheduled to hear the first reading tonight. Or the city council is, it's on the agenda.
So it says first reading and then I see that a first reading is a approval item. So we're having it on twice.
No, well, we have the public hearing and we conclude the public hearing and then if it's ready to go forward, then it can be part of your, part of their approval items for the first reading. Any other questions? Okay. Does that conclude the public hearing?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. I think we can move on. And could you please, Mr. Briggs, state how we're going to move forward with this, please?
It sounds like Mr. Councilmember Sandretto wants to make a motion to amend the current proposal to include an approval signature block for the fire department for short and long plots. Sounds like it's already there for boundary line adjustments.
Okay, so would that come when we hear the first reading?
So we're going to skip to K three right now? So we're closing the public hearing?
Yep, Alan's right. We have to close the hearing before we have a motion.
Okay, um, since there are no more comments, I will now close the public hearing. And I will reopen the council meeting. Okay, now, is there a need to skip to this item or can we just go through as and do it at the time that it comes up?
Well, I think HBL needs some direction in terms of what, what they're going to come back with, with the second reading. We know council member Sandretto's concerns and perhaps on the remaining council, if Mr. Sandretto or council member Sandretto wants to make a motion that would give HBO some direction in terms of what to come back with.
So just to clarify, we're going straight to K three, which is
Just wrapping up the public hearing.
Yeah, that, yeah, we're doing the public, we're still doing the first reading, but
Well, the first reading is K one. It's clear down or K three.
There needs to be a motion at the end of the public hearing.
Right, if we're wanting to amend the proposal.
Okay, so I'll, I'll motion to amend and the signature block for the fire department on a short and long class. On the proposed changes to title seventeen, as stated in the first rating, which is in K three on our agenda, which will move up. So you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. So then we will call for approval of the ordinance ten thirty-nine as amended. And I will accept a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandra, do I?
Was it with I?
Read I.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Didn't get a vote from Mr. Mokler.
We can't change the agenda. All right, we need a motion to change the agenda first. We can't amend it until it's reopened. We can't reopen it before we had it.
I already reopen the regular meeting.
What Mr. Mokler is saying, Madam Mayor is the approval of this ordinance was lower on the agenda and we can't move agenda items after it's been approved. Can we just, we're just going to leave it where it's at and I'll re-motion it.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you. Sounds good.
So basically the motion we passed was to for the public hearing to amend the first reading of the ordinance at K three when we get there.
Right.
And, and I'll remake that motion and we'll go through the process and this vote.
My order, I was wrong. For clarification, did that amendment need to be made in the public hearing? I think that's what Millian said. No, okay.
Okay, so we're going to
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so moving now to K one. Second reading of ordinance ten thirty-seven, amending the Benton City Comprehensive Plan twenty seventeen with twenty twenty-one amendments.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
This is just basically the same thing from the last meeting with all the red out of it. Updated and cleaned up and I don't think there was any changes at the last meeting. I didn't see any. So it's just a second reading from the May seventeenth meeting all cleaned up.
No, do it.
I make a motion, oh, Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance ten thirty seven, amending the Benton City Comprehensive Plan twenty seventeen with twenty twenty one amendments.
Mokler, second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Mokler, aye.
What's with I?
Sandra, do I?
Read aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, item K two, second reading of ordinance ten thirty eight. Amending the Benton City zoning map and reclassifying certain real property. To implement the Benton City Comprehensive Plan of twenty seventeen with twenty twenty one amendments.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve on the second reading ordinance ten thirty eight, amending Benton City zoning map and reclassifying certain real property. To implement the Benton City Comprehensive Plan twenty seventeen. With twenty twenty one amendment.
Okay. All in favor, or do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes.
So there's a parcel number that was being proposed to change from R two to R three. And it's all by itself on her horn drive and everything around it is only R two. Is there a process to request? That be removed instead of changed to R three, if anybody else is supportive of it? This was a concern I raised last time we talked about it. It seems like it's spot zoning because everything else is either red for commercial or R two. But there's a parcel that's being requested that is pink for R three.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
I had that same concern. And. My friends over at AVHL made me feel better last time. When they said it's not spot zoning when it's the size of the lot. And that's a twenty acre parcel. Now, I am, so. Let's open and frankly discuss this particular parcel because. I I'm going myself, you know, this is now about in a new residential area. But the other thing I'm also looking at is. What's going to go in there? I'm concerned with duplexes, apartments, things like that. But that's the R three zoning. And the question I have for you is, do we have enough of those in Benton City?
And the question that I have for Alan is, do we have enough clean water to support every single thing that's planned right now? And enough sewer right now as it stands today to support every single one of these things too?
Good evening. Yes, with the water, the there are water rights to support that. The infrastructure and possibly. The. Storage. We'd have to look at those on a case by case basis. Because when somebody comes in to develop something, we have to look at all that. And what we, what the facilities can can manage.
On a case by case basis.
Right, so so the water rights are there, so the infrastructure. They, of course, they're gonna have to extend water and sewer to their property and within their property. And so if there's any other impacts on the system, we'd be looking for them to make those improvements.
Thank you.
So. I I've asked the same questions up there. I I don't think we're in danger of that piece. We may have a sewer issue if it's coming from the the further out area. But that's just kind of what I've been being fed. I I refer to this guy as my expert, right? My my real concern is, does it fit? Well, A, our comprehensive plan. And B, that local area. And what what's going going there? We we just don't know what could go in there. But. Typically, in R three, we're gonna have either duplex or an apartment complex. And I have to look at the human factor. Do we have enough of those? Are Benton City residents being served? I don't know, but I'm I'm thinking not. I think we have a lot of nice, big fancy houses that are four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But fifty percent of our residents can't afford that. So I I really struggled with this one, I gotta tell you. I I even considered amending this to say, let's keep it R two. But anything R two right now, the median house prices in Detroit is around four hundred thousand dollars. New home buyers can't live, are 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 people who are struggling on. And and people disagree with this, but fourteen dollar an hour jobs, they're still not being able to afford housing. They're still having to live in apartments now. I I think. That rezonance and that remapping is appropriate. That's my 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 two cents.
Those are really great points. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? I think I have a motion, but do I have a second?
Mokler, second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandra, do I?
What's with I?
Mokler, aye.
Read aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, Mr. Sandretto, you were going to amend item K three.
I motion to approve. On its first, the first reading warrants ten thirty nine. Amending chapter seven title subdivision, I've been sitting in this code as amended previously. To add a fire department or fire district sign off block. In short plots and long plots.
Mokler, second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandra, do I?
What's with I?
Mokler, aye.
Read aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item K four, first reading of ordinance ten forty. Amending section five point oh four one twenty. Formal application required and section five point oh four point one forty renewal procedure.
Discussion.
Yes.
Yes, you may.
So this ordinance was brought to you guys regarding those fire inspections. With. Applications and renewal process. So. The best place I found to put it was under formal applications where in the state, fire inspections are required for all businesses located within. The city limits at initial application and annually for for all renewal of business licenses. These inspections are for all businesses within the city limits. And then the renewal process of fire inspections are required for our to renewal of business licenses. This is based off of the topic we've brought with Bill and Jenny regarding the fire inspections. For for businesses. Inside city limits. And this will reflect the next part.
And. Madam Mayor, may I address?
Yes.
Rebecca. So my 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 discussion item is syntax, because. The wording.
Okay.
So my my concern is, it just says business license. So every single business license has to get a fire inspection.
Inside the city limits, so big Benton City is.
Okay, so what what if that business doesn't have a business? They're a mail order place or something, so you know, they're.
They operate out of their house.
They don't have a physical location.
So what we can do is we can put on there, fire inspections are required on all businesses located within the city limits that have public access.
Publicly occupiable.
Or public occupancy.
I I think we need to have some sort of differentiation there.
I do too.
Sorry, Councilman Reed, did you have a?
Yeah, publicly occupiable, we were trying to find the find some kind of adequate verbiage for that. But I do agree if somebody's, you know, just mailing something out of their house or whatever and receiving a fee, obviously, we don't need to do a. Life safety inspect, we don't need to enforce a life safety inspection on that. My reference was to what we are currently requiring. Businesses to get the building inspector or the life safety inspections on.
Okay, so so then that that runs the. To the other question. Which is the fee set. Now, you were saying that the states can only have one fee set, correct?
No, we get charged one fee set by Northwest Code. We get charged seventy five dollars a pop.
No, I was talking about the state business license.
Yes, it's only one fee. For the licenses, the application and renewal. And for our discussion, we decided to increase so. To one twenty five for initial and one of one hundred for renewal.
Okay, so. All of a sudden, all sorts of things come to the mind here. I I'm monkey wrench from me, I'm sorry. So the the statement comes out that. We got people that may not need these fire inspections, and that's what our fee re-increase is to cover. So how do we address that?
Simplest thing I can think of is to create two different. Types of licensing. Or they initially pay for the whole thing, get a portion refunded under a certain code, certain.
So with, how how would that work and what would be the best way to do it?
Now that you bring up that point. You have a point because the city of Othello, where I work. Their business license decrease in price per quarter. So annually, it's eighty. Then it goes to sixty, then it goes to forty, then it goes to twenty. So maybe there is a possibility to restructure our fee, but I have to talk to BLS to see how we go about that.
So I I think we need to talk to BLS and see if we can actually have two business licenses. One for a non-physical occupancy and one for a physical occupancy.
Okay, so that wouldn't, if they say yes, what that will entitle is adding that verbiage into our ordinance as to what's the difference between a.
A physical location and non-physical.
Well, it's not that it's a physical location, it's.
Publicly occupiable.
Okay, yeah, so so whatever we have to do to differentiate, who's getting to have to.
So then my next question would be is. Well, we're not going to pass the resume based on our conversation. The one twenty five would be for pub public occupant business license. And do we leave fifty five for non-public occupant? We still get the way it is?
Yeah.
Well, let me get with BLS with Michelle, who's our case manager for it, and see what we can do. And then, do you guys want then, don't pass this ordinance? And I come back with that verbiage, all of it in one sweep?
Yeah, yeah, I think we're we're gonna need to have it redone, brought back, but. BLS doesn't have the capability to say, you know, check this box to add a fire inspection.
I don't know. This is this is new territory for me.
Because if that's the case, then we could keep the business license at X fee. And then say, when they go in there, are you going to have the public in your building type thing, check that box X, and then it runs the price.
And if they, if they do have that option, then that's where, when we get those applications, JB, who reviews them all, can see if. They're putting the right information, because that's what we do, is we get the application or review it all. And then we tell them it's approved or not. So if they do have that capability, when it comes to us, we can say, we can see the same, for example, the phone. Okay, if they say, no, they don't have public occupancy, we know they're due because they just want to pay fifty five, you're denied. Re-admit, you have public occupancy.
Yeah.
So. We have that distinction, but I have to get with BLS to see if that's another question.
Yeah, see if see if that's possible, because I I don't think refunding the money.
It'd be a headache.
Yeah, it would be a pain for you, but if we had a way that they could say, hey, my business is going to be a taco eatery and yes, people are going to be inside of it. Then they have to get the fire inspection.
So when you look at chapter five dot oh eight of our business categories right now, none of them really read, like they provide for. Non-publicly occupiable space. So there may be a path forward where you need a category D perhaps as you're researching it that covers what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay, and we may need to look at the, see this is a problem, we need to look at everything, you know, if you go back and you. Read and might as well throw this out here while we're at it. Our ordinance, as it sits in the books on marijuana, so it's a legal and a misdemeanor to possess inside the city. Guess what? State law says it's not. So we we should address that. And I don't know, Madam Mayor, if you want to direct the attorney to take a look at that or not.
Yes, I think the rest of the code needs to be gone through as well as. As the parts that. HBL have done.
In light of the Blake decision, it'd have to be knowingly possessing marijuana and being less than twenty one years of age, it'd still be a misdemeanor. Unless you have a medical prescription.
And doesn't lay it out that way. All it says is a medical prescription and then you're in possession.
Right, but if you're twenty one years of age or older, you can use it recreationally. So you'd want to have that in there as well.
Yeah, our ordinance doesn't say that at all, so.
At one point, the Sheriff's Department had requested us to match the county code so they could enforce them properly and didn't have to. Do it four different ways for each area they patrol or.
Yeah, we did that with dog licenses and another section, I can't remember which which ones, but. Yes.
May I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
So what's the process? We table this or we just?
I think we bring it back.
Well, it's gonna take more than two weeks to get this figured out.
Okay, well, then we bring it back at. A month from now.
Table it to July nineteenth, that gives me time to work with BLS and do whatever I have to.
Madam Mayor, I moved the table this until July nineteenth, so it gives Rebecca time to. Amendment.
Mokler, second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Okay.
Sandra, do I?
Mokler, aye.
What's with I?
Read aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay, then moving on to the next topic, which. Is item K five, resolution twenty twenty two oh nine, fee schedule.
Madam Mayor, I motion to table that until the July nineteenth meeting as well.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandra, do I?
Mokler, aye.
Okay, what's with I?
Read aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. Item number six, resolution twenty twenty two dash ten. Authorizing utility assistance using ARPA funds, Rebecca.
Okay, so at our last city council meeting, I mentioned to you the process that city of Sunnyside used for their ARPA funds. So basically, they provided me their resolution, applications, flyers, and everything. Why reinvent the wheel when it's already been invented? So that's what I did. This is the resolution. So that's what I did, this is the resolution, um. Designating a hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty-two and creating the utility assistance program. For the bills of our citizens here in the city of Bend City. Attached are the applica, the residential guidance and application, the business commercial guidance and application. And a flyer that will be posted, these will be done in English and Spanish. So, um, it's for your guys' consideration. Um, you guys did mention at the last city council that you guys wanted. Numbers through the end of July, which is when a moratorium expires. Um, I do want to update that from the February, February report I gave. To the, to today, I reran a past due report. We're now at a hundred and three accounts that are passed due. Um, however, thirty-five of those were on February and are on today, so I did do a comparison. Um, and there has been a decrease in the amount of money because people have been paying for this. So, um, I don't have the concrete numbers, but I did check the amount of accounts and stuff and. The amount of accounts has increased, but the amount to pay or outstanding has decreased.
Discussion, so thanks Rebecca, so on February first, there was sixty-eight accounts that were sixty days past due or more, the total value of those accounts was fifty-two thousand dollars. And then when you roll it forward today and take a look, there's a hundred and three accounts that are past due. Which includes thirty-five from the sixty-eight old ones. And those one hundred and three accounts that are sixty days past due or more today are past due for a total dollar amount of thirty-one thousand dollars. So I had asked for that update because I thought it was useful to have perspective. That even though we've talked about a hundred thousand dollars. There's only about thirty-two thousand dollars, maybe maximum, of people that are only sixty days old who might have been listening to us on planning commission, excuse me, on the city council and. Hearing about the benefit they might get for not paying the bill, so we should be able to help a lot of people based on the balance that's outstanding.
Um, one of the other things that I, as doing this application. That I noticed that the city of Sunnyside did that I didn't put on here because I want to discuss it with you guys first. I'm, I'm, this application, it's a one-time payment. The city of Sunnyside did a monthly payment. So I don't know if that's something you guys want to do, or just the one time and that's it? Or they're able to apply every single month until the funds are gone? You know, that's what the city of Sunnyside did. It's up to your guys' discretion, like I said, I just did it as a one-time, you apply once, get your funds, you can't apply again. But, um. That was another thing that I saw that the city of Sunnyside did was like a re, they're able to apply for a recurring payment. On a monthly basis, but they have to apply every single month. And the other thing, um, is. Uh, are we, if and when this goes into effect and they, and they. Approve and they apply and we approve them, are we wanting to be cutting checks to ourselves? I think that's the best tracking way. Is once the application's approved, we forward it to Diana for payment, she got to check me. That kind of tracks and is good for our book, isn't it, present all our, our funds, however used. Instead of just giving credits on the account. That's the resolution in front of you, you can.
Would it be possible to do the one-time payment and if we have funds left over, we could then switch to the reoccurring payments as needed?
Yeah, that would, that would, what that would do is just bring it back as a resolution, saying we've used so much at one-time payments. This is how much we have left for reoccurring payments and then just update the application.
How long would we intend to continue to do that for?
These are funds set aside for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, till the end of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, because there's a thirteen month.
Yes, that was going to be my question, if there was a time limit on here, so you guys don't get pigeonholed into, it's only for this, this program. And then when the program's up or there's no end, that you would just kind of lose that money because it was earmarked for that. So I want to see if there was a time limit, so you guys have flexibility.
Otherwise, because anything that was over, for example, if you said, well, whatever the amount is at July thirty-first. If it's forty thousand, that's what it is, it's up to forty thousand based on the criterion and application, that means the other sixty thousand goes back into the water and sewer used for ARPA fund.
Yes, I want to make sure you had that flexibility to do that, that didn't.
If that's the intention.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if the intention of council, council is to use it for all of twenty twenty-two or. Utility assistance for anybody else, then the whole hundred grand is it. And also keeping, other question I've had for you guys is can people who have inactive accounts apply for it as well? That means that they've closed the account and just didn't pay for it. That's where I can, that's why I can put the distinction on there, does not include inactive accounts because we do have. About four thousand dollars of inactive accounts.
Yeah, disagree with that.
If they close their account and they just didn't want to pay their water bill and they quit. Uh, that's on them, uh, I, I think this, uh. So I'm, I'm really torn right now, um, let me get that out. I see the human factor. We're going into a horrible season with inflation. But I think the only thing that we can do as a city and what's prudent for us to do. Is to give people that, that help that we can, get them up to zero balance. And then from that point. Roll those funds back into the ARPA projects. If we can. To.
So then with that being said, Mr. Sandrato, we have put maximum amount awarded of fifteen hundred for residential, three thousand for businesses, there won't be a cap. Because we have some businesses that are five, six thousand dollars. And if we want to get them to zero, they're over the cap.
Oh, that's another dilemma.
A sixty-day limit on the initial application. And at that point, they can apply for that three thousand dollars and then if there are funds left over, we can. Take further applications for more.
So that's. Uh, what we can do, just me thinking aloud, you're trying to see where Mr. Sandrato is, um, coming from. Is leave the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for residential, three thousand for business. And then state that they're able to, uh, reapply within sixty days. So that way they can, we can see that they're, if they try to make their own payments. Then we're willing to help them again, but if they're just going to rely on us to pay for everything.
Or can, can, may I have the floor?
Can city staff support this administratively to do anything more than once? And effectively and efficiently with tracking that's detailed with no errors?
It lie on my head.
I really, really, really want to help everyone that we can in the community as much as we absolutely can.
It would lie on me because it, them being ARPA funds and payments, it would be between me and AP. To, to keep the applications and approvals and all that, I can create the spreadsheet folders, whatever you guys want me to do. And report to you guys on a monthly basis how much has been paid out.
Just had a thought, uh, that you had mentioned that if they were attempting to make payments on their own to help account up to par. Once the initial payment, uh, my thought is take that sixty days, get the applications in, set those limits. And after that, they can make another application for matching funds. Does that make sense? So if they pay three hundred dollars on their account, the city will also contribute another three hundred dollars.
I agree with that.
That's smarter, yeah.
So then after the first initial payment?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So we keep the, we keep the limits, the fifteen hundred and the three thousand, we keep that. We'll do this in a couple of different application periods, let's say sixty days for the first one to, to get your application in, to get the payments in. And.
Then a matching funds.
And then after that, we'll do another sixty-day period where we do matching funds.
So the application can be, can be done differently for matching funds, because then we would, that would basically. Put them to how much are you going to be giving, we'll match it and give them a timeframe of how long they have to, and then until they give their payment, we will give ours.
Correct.
Okay. So, um, are we wanting to table this to update all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Can you, please also update in the application that you're allocating up to a hundred thousand dollars, I'd suggest you put that verbiage in in case we don't hit that limit. Because what we can see right now is we only have thirty-one thousand dollars, so if there's businesses that are more than sixty days past due. That means out of a hundred and three people, there could be one business that has ten thousand dollars and all the rest are very small.
Well, just to confirm, the highest is six grand.
Okay.
There's nobody that high.
Just confirm, if there's a business that hasn't paid for that long, we need to talk to them.
We absolutely need to talk to them, but we still, it may be, it may be hard with all the assistance that we're providing to still reach that hundred thousand dollars. And we need to be able to roll it back at some point in time into the budget or have that flexibility instead of saying we're allocating it on an application that we're distributing to the public. That we might not reach.
Do we want to do sixty days? Because keep in mind, the moratorium ends July thirty-first, so first shut-off will be August thirty-first.
So, so.
It was just, uh, I was just throwing that out there.
Whatever works best. Go until November or whatever.
On the moratorium?
No.
That's, that's.
On the timeframe of this, but. What, uh. We got to have something in there that stipulates we're going to roll the unused funds back over.
Okay, so that's going to have to go in the resolution, correct, Jeff? Okay, so we need to redo the, redo.
Right.
Okay, and then, um. See, one other thing I want to make it clear. Uh, here, just in case you guys get questioned, on the. Announcement, it's, I'm going to make it bolder, it says assistance funds do not, cannot be used on NSF fees, stand fees, standby fees, late fees or shut-off fees. So if they get shut off, we can't use these ARPA funds for that.
It doesn't pay the, the shut-off fee, but it will pay whatever's in arrears.
Yes, it won't pay NSF fees, it won't pay standby fees, it won't pay late fees and it won't pay shut-off fees, it's just arrear fees, yes. You agree with that? Okay, so we're going to table this to July fifth or July nineteenth?
Fifth, if you can.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Because you need to have your program in place and rather.
Okay, I'll take, um, a motion to table.
Motion to table till July ninth.
Mokler second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandrato, aye.
Mokler, aye.
Okay, Watson, aye.
Three aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay, moving on to WCIA, uh, deductible for the repairs of the community center. Rebecca?
So, um, we brought this to city council previously and council requested that the issue be brought back with estimates for reparations, community center. Attached are two estimates that were received, this is supposed to be done by Jose, but he's not here. Um, the estimates from above, the rest roofing is an estimate for a full slope replacement of six thousand sixty-five ninety, does not include cell stacks. I mean. Yeah. Um, the second estimate from Palmer Roofing estimate is for a re-roof of the, half of the building that's damaged. And that is twenty-nine thousand one hundred, does not include cell stacks. So, um, if you see the email. From WCIA, they came and given, uh, uh, I didn't turn it up myself, um. A walkthrough of how it happens, basically, we pay the deductible, we get the repairs, they go after the insurance company. Um, get the money back, we get our five thousand dollars back and then, um, whatever we pay for, or whatever they pay for it.
Okay. Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
So I, I read the email, I read the, the dialogue back and forth. Um, and what I get out of it is both of these are half slope. One-side replacements, but I don't get how you have a difference between six thousand and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
My understanding, if I, that's why I was supposed to, to, to do this.
Well, it looks like ones for replacement and ones for repair, right?
Yes, one is replacing the full panels and the other one's just.
If, if you read the first quote, it says full slope replacement, that's one side. If you read the next quote, it's the same thing, one side.
So I don't know, one, one costs a lot more than the other.
Well, I was looking at, the only difference I see is this per panel. And I just cannot imagine that some sort of roofing material is. Twenty-nine thousand dollars extra, or twenty, twenty-six thousand. Twenty-three thousand dollars extra, just in material. So obviously, I, I think if you want a motion on this.
I just need a motion on the five thousand dollars.
Yeah. Well, I'm also going to, in discussion.
Um, that I can kind of bring up, if you look at the, um, Palmer Roofing down here. It says this bit includes intent and affidavits to prevailing wage.
That's forty dollars. I'm, I'm just.
For all the hours?
No, for the, the intense and affidavits, you, you think that prevailing rate is going to push it up that high?
Well, the, above. Above the roofing metal roof labor, thirty-two seventy-five dollars. Metal roof labor.
Um, on the first one?
Yeah, it says metal roof labor quantity thirty-two, rate seventy-five dollars.
No, and that's probably prevailed rate.
I think they'd be required to pay it.
Yeah.
Because of the nature of the work. Also, I would, I would point out that WCIA is indicating that they will pay for the cost of the repairs. So in their, in their email, so there might be some confusion here, because the first line of that says, it would appear that. One estimate is for the repairs to the roof and the other is for a complete replacement of the roof, question mark? What they're getting at there is, as an insurance company, they're obligated to pay what's called the lesser of. Rule, so they would pay the lesser of the cost to repair it versus replacement. And so they go on to say, we'll pay for the repair, and so they're implying that they believe that the second estimate is for replacement, which they wouldn't cover. That's kind of what I'm leaning for. But to Councilmember Sandrato's point, it looks like they're both replacement estimates, I mean, does they?
Of, of half roof, so if you read the second estimate, it says under a proposal, we hereby submit specifications and estimates to re-roof half of the building. And I believe that's what the other intent is on there, so, um, obviously I'm going to go with the low bidder on this one, yeah, that'd be my recommendation, Jose. Um, but I'll give you that motion and I say, I move. I make a motion to authorize a deductible payment of five thousand to WCIA for the claim on the community center.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandrato, aye.
Mokler, aye.
Okay, Watson, aye.
Three aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, um, the next item is appointment of, of the planning commission. Um, and, uh, did I hear you, you received another application tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, at the beginning of the meeting, um, we received an application from Ms. Loretta Lori Lynn.
Oh, great.
And.
And they were just, um, distributed to council for review. So. Two vacancies, we have two applications.
Madam Mayor, would you like separate motions or do you want just one blanket?
I think you can do it in one, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve, um, appointment of Dawn Allen. And Loretta Lynn to the two open vacancy. Uh, seats and, excuse me, to confirm the appointment of those two people to those. Open vacancies. On planning commission.
Mokler second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Send right away. Mokler, aye.
Thank you.
What's with I?
Read aye.
Okay, motion carries, congratulations, Dawn and Loretta, thank you, thank you for volunteering. Okay, and I guess the next council meeting is this week, so you'll be busy. All right, um, the last. Uh, next item is contract award for fourteen ninth street sewer relocation project Alan.
Okay, before you, you have the, uh, bid tabulation for the bids received. Um, for the ninth street sewer relocation. And, um. We went through the sewer budget and looked at it versus what's available. Um, because. In the budget, there were several items that are now on the ARPA project list. And so there is money to cover this amount. Looking back at it, um. The original line item estimate I think was a fifty thousand dollars. But that was before we added Levi Kearns on to the project. And also with the current bidding prices, um. There are a, a lot of increases in materials. Um, one item, uh, in this is the, uh, the sewer line. Um. We typically used about thirty-five dollars a foot for sewer line. Um. You know, even back to last fall and, uh. I. Um, I believe the lowest, the lowest tier was, uh. Total site services, they use sixty dollars a foot for installing sewer line. Um, so there's several items that there's just increases in materials. Uh, we've got increases due to gas. And we're seeing that all over, I've talked to other, uh, engineers and, uh. Estimates that were made last fall are definitely no good. And, uh. I guess we'll get into it also that we've updated the ARPA list. Uh. Estimates based on these last two bids. Um. But we'll get into that on the next, uh, item. For Hope Lane Water Line. But, um. Like I was saying, we've gone through the budget and the, the money's there to cover that cost. Any questions?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Uh, does anybody else have any questions on this? I, I just had a statement. So.
I have a question. And so my question is, um, appreciate everyone's patience because I'm new, thank you very much. My question was, is it normal that the city would be covering the entire cost of these type of sewer relocation projects?
The answer, the short answer is that if there is no easement on the property. This is a sticky wicket, all right, because this guy's looking at me really, really bad here. Um. So there, there's a, there's a, an entanglement. That we have to avoid. That entanglement. Really comes at our cost. And that's why we're getting an easement for the current one. Correct me if I'm wrong. That it says that we can run our sewer lines through there.
Where we're going to relocate.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So that in the future, there's no. Entanglement. So yes, in this particular case, it is our burden to bear.
It's, it's real hard to do, to put it on the landowners unless you have a development permit that's vested. Or you want to form a, a local improvement district by resolution or something like that, then you could. Uh, pass that class out, but ordinarily, it's, it's certainly not a gifting issue because you're, it's a, it's a function of government to provide sewer, so. There's no real issue there and the city certainly can foot the bill for it.
And we know it's an, or in addition, we know it's an older sewer line, so this is a great opportunity for upgrade.
Right.
Just with a additional unplanned cost of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, knowing that this is recorded. And knowing that we're all good stewards of taxpayers' money, I think it's an important thing to restate, I appreciate you for indulging me, thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Um, just so council knows, in light of this, um, I have already kind of put it in the budget. Because originally it was fifty thousand, so I upped it to one seventy-five, so that'll be coming down the pipeline for the budget amendment. So it's already. It's already in there. So I need a motion to.
Well. I, I just want to make sure Ms. Funk is, you understand where we're at on that?
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, absolutely.
So. But I guess I'm the bearer of all things, I make a motion to award the fourth. Did somebody have something?
Mr. Sand, Mr. Sandero, Mr. Mayor, can, can I address this issue?
Uh, I think we're going to vote on this, Mr. Deckard.
Uh, I, I understand that, I would just like to clarify some, some points if that's okay.
Um, if you're doing quickly, please.
Uh. Heta owns, owns the property, we, 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 I did a design, design work for the property and we discovered the, uh. Sewer line was running across his property and there was no easement. And Heta has graciously bent over to assist the city in granting them permission. To have an easement to cross his property and at the same time allow, got a hold of Levi, Levi Kearns and. To de- de- develop this to be an expedition at more simpler system for the city. And so. Ellen, Ellen, Ellen Rainey has been more than helpful, helpful in, uh. Getting this all work, 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 work forward so that we can make, make this better for the city and the property. I just want, what, what, I just, I just wanted. Everybody to understand that, that there's no underhanded anything here, nobody's rich, the, the city's gaining. Uh, head, head is gaining and it, it worked, worked out great for all the parties involved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deckard. Okay, uh, we have a, a motion and.
Madam Mayor, I was just getting ready to get the motion, but, uh, can I address Mr. Deckard real quick?
Yes, you may.
As well as I'd like to address, uh, Alan, I appreciate what everybody's done on this project and I appreciate, uh. Um, trying to come to a quick resolve on it. And with that, I'll make a motion to award the four fourteen ninth street sewer relocation project to total site services in the total amount. Of a hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents with sales tax included.
Read second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sandretto, yes.
Mokler, aye.
Thank you.
What's with I?
Read aye.
Okay, thank you, motion carries, and Heather will be happy. Okay, uh, moving to our last item for approval, is the contract award for Hope Lane Water Line ARPA project. Mr. Rainey.
Okay, we opened bids and, uh, the bid was, uh, substantially higher than we had estimated. And this again was due to material costs and, uh, gas prices driving up other costs. Um. One item on the bid that, uh, that did increase quite a bit as an example is the, the water service. Uh, we've used eight hundred to a thousand dollars is a typical cost for this. Um, the low bid was, uh. Uh, twenty-four thousand four hundred and seventy or, or forty-seven dollars, two thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Um, so that's, uh, quite an increase just in that cost. Um. And I talked with the contractor on this and he said he was expecting materials to cost about forty thousand. They were about eighty thousand dollars. Um. And so, um, I think everybody has a copy of this, uh, this is, uh, the ARPA project list. So what we did, or what I did was go through and update the estimates for the projects. Uh, based on these new costs. Um. That we received in the bids and so side by side, you can see what we had for the, um, June seventh estimates. And then you can see that the June twenty-first. And the next column is a change and. Uh, the first few projects, uh, don't have a lot of, uh, materials. Um. That are similar in, in these two bids, but if you look at project seven through seventeen, you can see, uh. Uh, large increases in, in some of the costs. Um. So the final column, um, we show projects, um. With the current funding. And I guess I should step back up at the top of the block, uh, kind of in, uh, I guess yours is kind of yellow. Uh, we show, uh, funding and we have the, um, ARPA funding that we received, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. The exchange money with the county is one point five million. And then within the current water fund for the city, under capital expenditures. There is two hundred and two thousand dollars that has been allocated. Um. There was some that was, it was like a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars that was allocated for ARPA project. There are projects that are now under ARPA. So that frees up a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um. And then there was another, uh, fifty thousand dollars plus or minus this, um. Available and other line items that are not being completed this year. Um, so with that last column, we included that. Uh, two hundred thousand dollars from the capital funds. And the total project cost would be. Approximately two point five million and the funding would be two point six million. So we still have a hundred, hundred thousand dollars available to help cover some of the other costs in the water projects. That, that aren't on this list, if that makes sense.
Basically that we can reallocate to other projects, because it will be. Um. One of the things that I mentioned to Mr. Rainey. Is. We had reservoir repairs. Well, reservoirs are water towers. My understanding, and we already had that in our budget. We had fifty grand already in our budget for water tower repairs. So that's why that one's covered by water budget because it's, it was a capital, capital project that was already in our budget.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, and if you see in the notes, I've noted where these items will be moved to or what they can be covered by in funding.
With all the increases, you're giving us a discount, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And we can see that time's like really of the essence to be moving on these.
Yes, it is.
And one of the things I mentioned to Mr. Rainey is to add. A five to ten percent contingency on top because. Given what's happening now with prices going up and then ninth street, all the issues we had. You know, I would prefer to have a cushion for each project in case something does happen.
Well theoretically, they're supposed to be hard money and should be good, but.
Issues happen.
Um. If there's no further comments. I make a motion to award the Hope Lane Water Line ARPA project.
The motion has the wrong dollar amount in it. It says the June seventh, it's two eighty-four on this sheet. We don't want to get in trouble because we put the wrong amount.
Right, no, so.
Interrupting.
No, that's okay, so what you see here is a total project cost.
Okay.
That includes our five percent, that includes, uh, uh, compaction testing.
Yeah.
Um, the, the two fifty-four is the, the contractor's cost.
It's just a coincidence that it's the June sixth number two.
Well, that's, um. Yeah, I see what you're saying, um, I guess that, that probably was a typo because that should have been one seventy-six.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, I just.
No.
Want to make sure you, you get everything you want, excuse me for interrupting.
So what'll happen, just to clarify, Mrs., Mrs. Funk is, we're going to award the bid for two fifty-four, six thirty-one, but we're going to budget two eighty-four, seven forty-two.
That will cover other costs associated with it.
Because that's what the contract is. Right?
Nope, sorry.
Go ahead, sorry, Mr. Sandero.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to award the Hope Lane Water Line ARPA project to industrial construction of Washington ICW. And a total amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-two cents with sales tax included.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Sandra, aye.
Mokler, aye.
Thank you.
What's with I?
Read aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, um, now we will, um, adjourn the public session and move into executive session. After a five minute break, so public session is adjourned.
All right, well done, how long are we going to need?
They're not my executive session.
Twenty minutes.
Each one, so it's forty minutes?
No.
Twenty minutes?
I hope.
Okay.
I, yeah.
That's what I always say, right, it always works out.
It always works out.
Okay.
So after forty minutes?
Twenty minutes total.
Twenty minutes total.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I know I'm messing up.
Okay, are there, um, any other comments or general counsel comments?
Um.
I was, I was an army jumper. Which one announced?
The one that Dan wanted to give regarding the past year.
I was going to do that.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Madam Mayor, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Lloyd Carnahan. And his service to the city. Uh, it's come to my knowledge that Mr. Carnahan had an accident at his home. He's severely ill at this point.
Yes.
And not expected to recover.
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Carnahan did projects such as the Dale Street Extension.
Um. The roundabout?
The roundabout. He served on the city council for approximately eight years and mayor for eight years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge that and thank him for his service and his family for their indulgences.
Thank you for that, I did have a chance to speak with him about two weeks ago, uh, when he first had, um. Uh, took ill, he had just been out of the hospital and I did have a nice chat with him and he was kind of optimistic, but. In a way, he was like, kind of resigned that he couldn't do as much as he could anymore. I feel bad for Anne. Uh, but she does have help. But it was, it's very sad.
It is.
Okay, so, um. If there are no other comments, I will adjourn the council meeting.
I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Mokler.
What's with I?
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody.